Thank you so much. Welcome, everyone. This is a joint meeting of the Town of Orleans and Town of Eastham Select Boards. My name is Kevin Gallagher, Chair of the Orleans Select Board. Welcome. It's Thursday, May 13th, 2021. This is a virtual meeting called, consistent under the Governor's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency due to COVID and the Commonwealth, real-time public access is provided on Channel 18 and the town's website, and we have been broadcast over Channel 18 here in Orleans. The link to the meeting is on our agenda. If you would like to phone in by telephone, that number is 646-558-8656, and the ID is 832-14912111. And I'll just go around the Orleans attendees, board members, if we can hear you, you can hear us, just say here. Andrea Reed.
Here.
Matt Runyon.
Here.
Mark Matheson.
Here.
Cecil Newcomb.
Here.
And for staff with Orleans is Town Administrator John Kelly.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Orleans President and Accountant for Madam Chair, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm just going to read a quick little quote because I do it at most of our meetings, so just a little quick one from, this one is Francis of Assisi, and it is, "Where there is patience and humility, there is neither anger nor worry." And with that, my board knows, and then we move in. So we're gonna just do a little real roll call. So we have Amy Ekman here, Art Arino.
Here.
Jared Collins.
I just brought him in. He's here.
Here.
Unmuted.
Alex Sastaro.
Here.
Okay, and for staff, we have Jackie Beebe and Shannon Brogan. And I think that's all we have here, and Laurie's doing the recording. Laurie's here, too. All right, I think that's all we have here for our staff, too. John?
Oh, Kevin, I know Nate Sears is in the attendees list. I was just going down, and Tom Daley. So they were invited to the meeting as well.
Mayor, if you could bring them in. Welcome, Nate and Tom.
Thank you, folks. Evening.
Good evening. And also, just on the screen, Leslie Fields is with the Woods Hole Group. And since we've both done our respective call to order, the next item on our agenda is a discussion on the proposed dredging project in the estuary. Leslie has just a brief update for us in terms of the status of the draft Expanded Environmental Notification Form filing and schedule. So Leslie, I will turn things over to you. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, everyone. So I was asked to start the meeting off with just a brief description of the permitting process for the Naussa Estuary dredging project, focusing primarily on the MEPA review process and the timeline required to complete that process, and what sorts of reviews and comment periods we'll have from the towns and from the public. So at the direction of the towns of Orleans and Eastham and the Naussa Estuary Stakeholder Group, which was meeting regularly back in the fall of 2020, Woods Hole Group began preparation of an Expanded Environmental Notification Form, or EENF, last fall. And we finally delivered a draft of that document to the towns and to the NESG in April of this year. So that ENF is a document that lays out the need for the project, describes the existing environment and physical conditions at the site, describes the alternatives that were considered and the impacts of those alternatives, and finally identifies a preferred alternative and any sort of mitigating measures that meet the goals of the project and minimize environmental impacts. So this particular EENF brings together information, data that have been gathered over about five years of work on the project. And we've been working together with many of you over the five years. It's been a long time, but we finally, you know, we finally, we got to this first step of the permitting. So this ENF does represent the first step in a long line of regulatory reviews that the project will have to undergo. Once the EENF is submitted to MEPA, their job is to solicit comments from the regulatory agencies and the public and to develop a scope for an environmental impact report. So we know this project triggers a mandatory EIR. And the purpose of filing this EENF is so we can get a scope for what needs to be in that EIR. So MEPA will use the comments they receive from the regulatory agencies and from the public to identify any sort of additional studies or analyses or field data that they feel need to be completed as part of the EIR process, so that ultimately, hopefully, they can make a finding that all feasible measures have been taken to avoid and minimize environmental impacts. So that's sort of a little bit about the MEPA process. I have a slide that I can show everyone that sort of shows you sort of the way we see this playing out in terms of the timeline with both the MEPA process and the subsequent permits. So if I may just share my screen, I have one slide with the timeline. Is that okay?
Mayor, could you help out?
Yep, you can share your screen. You're all set.
Okay, all right. Okay, so hopefully you guys can see this, and hopefully you can read it.
Looks good, Leslie. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So in our contract here, we have a task 13.1, which is the NEPA Cape Cod Commission Review. Late in the process, after we received this contract, we sort of decided to split the NEPA review and Cape Cod Commission review into subsequent tasks. So right now, this task is really just the MEPA process. So we've, like I said, we've prepared and submitted this draft Expanded Environmental Notification Form that took from fall of 2020 to April of this year. We're having this joint Select Board meeting tonight to receive comments on this Expanded ENF. We expect to have a similar meeting with the Naussa Estuary Stakeholder Group also in May. We haven't scheduled that meeting, but that's the intent, is to have a meeting in May with that group and to receive comments. And then we're also planning to have a public meeting for residents from both Eastham and Orleans to receive comments on the ENF, and that would be held in June. So Woods Hole Group will receive all those comments and will take, you know, a month to six weeks to put together the final ENF. If there's fewer comments, we can do it faster. If there's more comments, it's going to take longer. So six weeks is sort of the longest timeframe that we're projecting. Let's say we file, right now we're projecting, we're going to file that in mid-July. The final EENF with MEPA would be filed then. And MEPA then has about six weeks until April 30th, or August 30th, sorry, to issue the certificate from the Secretary on that Expanded ENF. And that certificate is the document that has the scope for the EIR in it. That will tell us what we need to do in order to prepare that EIR. And then the following task, I'll just go through those briefly. So once we have that scope, then we've estimated to the best of our ability the time that it will take us to prepare that EIR. So we've got about three months in the fall of this year to prepare that EIR. And let's say we submitted on November 1, MEPA then has until mid-December to issue their certificate on the EIR. And at that point, we are also hoping, mid-November, once we submit that EIR, that we could also start the NEPA process with Seashore. And there's an estimated review timeline in here for that process of about three months. So we'll have to refine that as we go along and figure out what sort of, what the NEPA review process looks like, whether it's an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, not quite sure yet. And then I just show the rest of the permits with the local, state, and federal agencies down here. We're filing those permits anywhere from February of next year down through August or September of next year. Assuming all that goes according to plan, that gives the agencies about a year, nine months to a year, to review the permits in this timeframe here. And the project could be ready for construction in the fall or winter of 2023, 2024. But I think most importantly here is, you know, for you guys and the public, if they're listening, is, you know, we are receiving comments on this draft ENF right now. And so, you know, we want to receive feedback on it, and we want to use that in order to formulate the final ENF.
Thanks, Leslie. That's a really good update. I think it hit the highlights. And as you said, it's kind of an initial opportunity for us to ask a few questions. I know personally, I'm more interested in the public process and procedures to be listening to the public and be sensitive to those needs and look forward to that opportunity. But open up to either boards. Jackie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, before we ask questions or make comments, I just wanted to clarify the process again. Or should we discuss it later? Because now I'm a little bit confused in terms of whether we are looking at a draft that we're going to try and revise tonight or we're looking at a final product that then is now going to public comment.
Leslie?
I think that's entirely up to this group, honestly.
Okay.
So if, you know, I did have a chance to listen to the Eastham Board of Selectmen meeting last week, and I understood there were a fair number of comments and concerns. So, you know, if that's something that this group wants us to try to address and iron out before we file this document, then I would encourage us to go through those comments and try to hash it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jamie.
And I just have a quick question, actually, between Jackie. Is this, should we have, is this one, I should have Shayna come in and maybe list some of those now? Or do we want to wait till, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I believe Shayna has our concerns sort of consolidated and...
Thanks, Shayna. Hi, everyone. Shayna Brogan with the Town of Eastham. So some of the items that the Select Board discussed at their last meeting and some points that I had raised in reviewing the Expanded Environmental Notification Form at their meeting on May 3rd consisted of the width of the dredge channel. We had discussed it at length in the Stakeholders Group meeting, but it's kind of expanded to be 100 feet wide behind the Barrier Beach in the ENF. The proximity of the channel to the backside of the Barrier Beach being 100 feet. The additional method of side cash dredging. And the studies that we have underway, which is the Bentec Habitat Study, the Finfish Study, the Naussa Barrier Configuration Mapping, which sort of maps the current state of the Barrier Beach now and into 2070. And then there were some mitigating impacts to the 60 acres of shellfish habitat. And then there was some additional discussion at the last Select Board meeting that would be helpful to have as data for decision-making. And those include having completed those studies with the Center for Coastal Studies, which are due to be completed in 2022. Having a greater understanding of the scope of those commercially affected that are moored out at the Naussa inlet, as well as those with shellfish grants and the wild harvesters. And then continuing our discussion through the exploration of possible new policies or programs for those commercially affected, some additional options or solutions to kind of accompany or replace this project. And then there were some concerns regarding the project duration and the scope and completing a one-time dredge with the operating window being 63 days in the winter months. So those were some of the items that we had kind of gone through and discussed in the Naussa Estuary Stakeholders Group, as well as previously at Select Board meetings.
Thanks, Shayna. Janie, if any of your board members want to expand on those or additional, I think this would be a great time to raise them for Leslie.
Okay, great. Thank you, Shayna, for the presentation, and I'm going to open it up to the board. Amy?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Leslie, for the presentation. I have one question on your, the comment period. You said, you mentioned six weeks. Is that how long the comment period will be open for this? Because I'm sure we're going to, you know, that's a huge document to sift through and come up with, you know, specific comments or questions about things that are in there. In fact, I've received at least probably eight pages of emails from one of our members of the Stakeholders Group that, you know, he has concerns and questions and a lot of the statements made in there. And so we want to make sure that all gets in. So what is the timeframe for the comment period, I guess, is my first question.
Okay, so the comment period of the draft is, again, entirely what this group and the Naussa Estuary Stakeholder Group wants it to be.
Okay.
So, you know, if you can get us your comments in the next two weeks, three weeks, that would be great. And then, you know, we'll need some time to address those comments. And as I said before, the more comments we get, the longer it's going to take. The next, once we finally do submit this document to MEPA, there is another public comment period through the MEPA review process. And the towns and the regulatory agencies and the public, for that matter, has the ability to provide comments to MEPA on this document at that time as well.
Okay. And you'll be notifying us as to when those come through or they're asked for?
I definitely will, yes. Yeah, I will.
Okay.
It's also published in the Environmental Monitor, but I'll let you guys know.
Okay. Yeah, I don't read that.
Okay.
But.
Fair enough.
One thing I sort of keep coming back to is, you know, when this all started, everyone knows I wasn't a fan of the project. But I, in the, looking back at, I think it was 2019, when you gave basically a chart of all the alternatives, we asked to see, you know, how a no-dredge scenario would play out against, you know, all these other proposals, whether it was through Hemingway or, you know, in the Coe behind the Barrier Beach, all those kinds of things. And I see that you did add it in, in its Alternative 1.1 in this, but it still doesn't show up in the chart, you know, as a rating. And I actually went through a little exercise where I, in 2019, I put it in, you know, and just on my own scored it. I have no, you know, background in anything like this. But, you know, obviously, if there's no cost, it's, obviously, it's the highest rating. If there's no environmental impact, it gets the highest rating. And the benefits, you know, get a lower rating because you're not, you know, improving the channel. You're not, you know, making it wider, deeper, and those sorts of things. And it, you know, in that scenario, it scored pretty high. And that was kind of why I was asking to see it compared. And, you know, you did mention it in the Alternatives Considered, but again, it didn't show up in that chart. And when I went to do it this time, I started looking, and I noticed that in 2019, everything was rated pretty equally. You could basically get one through five, depending on each category. But then I noticed in this document, all the benefits are weighted way heavier than the impacts or the logistics of the program. And so with them being weighted differently, obviously, it doesn't show up as a stronger candidate. But if you even everything out to make them, say, one through 10, or back to the one through five, the no-dredge alternative does score pretty highly, you know. And, you know, you talked about minimizing environmental impacts. Well, the no-dredge scenario really does minimize those. So I think it is important to show it in that chart and to show that, you know, if you don't dredge, yeah, you don't get the wider channel, you don't get some other things, but there are other ways also to, you know, it's, you mentioned that it's a do-nothing alternative. But I, you know, I don't look at it that way. I look at it as, if you don't dredge, there's other things you can do to improve safety. There's other things you can do to maybe help the commercial fishermen. I don't know specifically what there are. I threw some things out last meeting, and our member of the Stakeholder Group wasn't too happy with what I proposed. But I don't know specifically what they need, because I don't know how specifically they're impacted. And I'm hoping that some of those things show up in this process, so we can really see the needs versus the benefits of this. And, you know, as far as safety goes, you know, this, I think it sort of confuses mobility with safety. And just because you can't get through doesn't make it a safety hazard. I think that inlet itself is the huge safety hazard out there. And everybody knows that's not going to be improved. And so addressing some of the other safety issues, which we've already tried to do in Eastham, and I think in Orleans with, you know, boats that can get out there, two people behind the back channel. We just bought a surf boat to be able to get to people on the other side of the inlet. You know, we're going to be starting to enforce our no-wake zones so that people aren't flying through and, you know, potentially causing harm to kayakers or paddleboarders or other people in there. So I think there are other steps that we could be doing to help mitigate some of these concerns with safety. And again, as far as the commercial fishermen that are impacted, that's, I don't know what they need. And I think, I'm hoping those things get explored going forward, so that we know the true impact of this. You know, some people think it's a lot of people impacted. Others say it isn't that many, it's a few. So I think those things really need to be flushed out, so that people, you know, if there is a really strong need, it shows. And it isn't just people saying, oh, there is a need, and not having any backup to that. So those are sort of my main concerns. One thing I do want to say is, we, you know, at that last meeting, we were under the mistaken impression that the MOU was sort of our last chance to, you know, if we had issues with anything going forward, that we could back out. And that turns out not to be the case. We've contacted council, and they've assured us that, you know, if we have really strong concerns going forward with some of these issues with impacts to the Barrier Beach or the environment, that, of course, we can back out, because it's something, especially within our town, obviously. And appeal decisions and things like that. And so I'm sure you all saw the draft MOU, which sort of addresses some of those, or MOA, I think people were calling it now. I'm not sure what term to use. But, you know, I'm a little more confident that, you know, those opportunities for people that have concerns, because, you know, it seems the towns kind of have different priorities from residents. We have, you know, I know Orleans has, you know, strong commercial fishermen that are, you know, really vying for this. And some businesses, you know, we have a few commercial fishermen, but we definitely have more people really concerned about the environmental impacts on the estuary. And it's very important, you know, that we protect that resource. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Amy. I'm going to ask anyone else on the board. I'm going to just quickly, I'm going to call through Alex and Jared. Alex, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I'm looking forward to the next part of the permitting process to collect. So to talk about what Amy said is get definitive metrics to help solve this problem. And I'm hoping that through this process, continuing on, it will bolster Eastham and Orleans' relationship. And that if, you know, the project of dredging doesn't come to fruition for whatever cause, let it be through the permitting process or what have you, that we can continue to work on solutions for the management of the estuary. But again, I can't reiterate enough that the definitive metrics to make the decision is a key point for myself as a board member, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Jared, I shouldn't call on you since you're on the screen. Did you have anything you'd like to say?
Per usual, I'm going to agree with both Amy and Al already on that. All I'd add is that regarding the revisions, I don't think, as two boards together, perhaps we have any disagreements on it. We're trying to come up with a solution to a problem. And if dredging is the solution and there's no drawbacks, then great. But we have to continue the fact-finding mission. I think we're still in the weeds on that. And there's been a lot of good progress so far. But we got to look at the overall problem and get details on exactly what is needed to solve that problem and move on from there. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Jared. Art, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I think Jared and Al have said it all.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'm just going to just do a couple clarification questions, and maybe Jackie can pipe in, too. So there are some changes that we had proposed with the MOU, MOA, whatever you want to use for this, that did involve, you know, Eastham's role during the permitting process and our involvement. Are those changes going to be made?
I think that's later on the agenda, Jamie.
Isn't it later? Okay.
Could pause until we get there, and I'd be curious to kind of finish the roundup of thoughts as you did through the board, which was great, but include yourself as well.
Yep. So I just had one more kind of comment question about the shellfish relaying that seemed to be coming up more than it had in the past, about the 60-plus acres of shellfish relocation. To me, that was intriguing, because I'd never heard of that being done before. And so I had done a quick search online to see, you know, what other areas had done, how they handled it. And I couldn't find anything. So I thought maybe it would be really interesting, as part of this process, to find out what the plan is there, because, you know, it seems, you know, some shellfish are great, easy to relocate. That's their job. They're supposed to be farmed and moved. But others, you know, they really set up shop where they are. They like their habitat, and they don't like to move. And so, you know, I wonder, you know, what's going to happen to those animals when this proposed, if this proposed project happens? So I'm really interested to hear more about that. And also, I was wondering if Nate or if anybody had an idea of exactly where those acreage of shellfish were going to be moved from. That was another thing I couldn't quite find or wrap my brain around. And, you know, I was interested to hear, you know, Nate's opinion and also just the opinion of some of the research that's going to be done on that.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. Go ahead, Nate.
Well, you know, I would lean on Leslie's preliminary shellfish survey that we've done in terms of what's actually out there. I agree with Jamie. There are some shellfish that would be easily relocated and some that would be certainly challenging. In my opinion, turning over the bottom is not detrimental necessarily in a lot of aspects for shellfish. We have a very healthy and sustainable cohog fishery in the interiors of the estuary. What's actually on the backside of the beach in the channel, there's not much anecdotally that I can tell you from harvest reports, because I don't have fishermen actually out there bringing back much of a harvest from that location. So what Leslie can add to that for, you know, the process for identifying what shellfish are there would lead us to making, I think, better decisions about, you know, how to address managing that shell fishery in the best, you know, responsible way.
Yeah, thanks, Nate. Yeah, because I would hate to see us decimate one, you know, form of a livelihood for folks to encourage another, you know. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there's certainly something to be said for, there's likely that, you know, just because we haven't had a soft shell set in a long time, we do see soft shell sets inside, and they're coming from somewhere. And, you know, whether there is mature soft shell clams in the channel there, we need to identify those locations and make sure that we're protecting them, because there is a future. Just because we haven't had a recent fishery with those species doesn't mean that there isn't potential for the future.
Right, yeah. And they're a finicky bunch. They like their home.
You know it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Nate.
Great comments, Jamie. Thanks very much. Leslie, anything to add on the management of those little creatures that some like to be relocated, others don't so much?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things to add. We did a really comprehensive shellfish survey in the estuary. We spent days out there doing it. So we have a good picture and an understanding of what species are located where. There's a lot of good maps in that Expanded Environmental Notification Form that show you where those species are. Um, what I'm hearing is that we need to go a little bit further and sort of define what the shellfish relay looks like. And, um, and maybe do some things to avoid impacts to those. Those species that don't really wanna be moved.
Right.
Like soft shells or mussels. For example, the muscle bed. So, you know, I think that's something we can, we can, um, we can take care of and we'll have to work with Nate and. I don't know if it's Shayna. Shayna's moved up. I don't know who's, who's, is the shellfish officer in Eastham anymore, but whoever's over at Eastham. We can, you know, we'll definitely work with you guys to, to flush those details out.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask one quick question as a follow up. Thank you, Leslie. Um, so you, you were collecting the data on mapping out. What species and where? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, there's detailed maps in that ENF of what species are where, densities, everything.
And where did that data come from?
We collected it. Um, it was a shellfish sampling plan that was approved by DMF.
Okay.
And, um, we went out and implemented it and the results are in that document.
And which document is that in? Sorry, I must have missed that.
The ENF, the expanded ENF, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see it in there. Okay.
It's in the, um, existing conditions section that describes the environment.
Okay, great. And it was, it was a big document.
I, I.
Certainly was.
Understand, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. If I can, Jamie, I've got my board members chomping, so I think I'll go around the horn here. Shane, I'll come back to you if we, um, get Orleans board member input. Cecil, go ahead.
I was just curious, when was that survey implemented?
I have to go back and look, um. Two thousand nineteen, I'm gonna guess, nineteen or probably two thousand nineteen. Yes, Nate's saying yes. Yeah.
And the question for Nate was, when he said, uh, uh, I'm just curious, what channel were you talking about? That, uh, you're talking about the back channel on the back beach or are you talking about channels running up in front of Snow Shore up into the cove?
Uh, all of the above, Cecil. I, you know, we have. That was a pretty, um, uh, comprehensive study that Leslie did. We went out there. Uh, with a local fisherman and, and tested all these sites and, and. I would say anywhere from Hopkins out and that throughout the channel, you know, there was, there is some big stuff in there that, uh. Is, would be beneficial for future historic, you know, future sets i- inside and throughout the estuary. And, uh, I, I, I agree with Jamie that, you know, one of the things that I want to mention though, and I, I know, I know that the regulatory agencies. Will, including Division of Marine Fisheries are gonna make sure that through the process. We do protect these shellfish and we do everything we can to make sure that, uh. We're doing everything responsible. So I think, you know, the permitting process will trigger all this stuff. Um, they're not gonna let us do it wherever, whatever we want, that's for sure.
I would just add though, the, um, great benefit of. A joint conversation like this is we're raising and helping what we put forward to the regulators to show. We do know our resource and, you know, we'll learn more, but, um, I think the more confidence we can show them. In terms of knowing what we're doing, um, and be willing to hear their pushback and mitigation, um, I think will be well received. Any other Orleans board member comments, thoughts? Go ahead, Meth.
Um, I have a few, but I wanted to start with the, uh, term, you know, the hundred foot channel that gets, uh, thrown around. In these conversations and, uh, I wanna make sure I understand. Really what that means because I was under the assumption that the hundred feet is the permitting boundaries. Um, that are being sought in the application, but that the channel itself. Um, wouldn't be a hundred feet long. It's just that, that, that hundred feet. That, that hundred foot boundary allows the channel to actually meander, um, and follow. Um, the, the bottom in such a way that, that, that the, um, dredging is effective. So when all is said and done, the channel may, may, you know, wander from one side of the hundred foot. Limit to the other side, but the, the actual width of the, of the channel itself will not be a hundred feet. I- i- am I, is that correct?
Leslie?
Um, sort of. So, so what we put forth in the expanded ENF was. A hundred foot wide dredge channel behind the barrier beach and a fifty foot wide dredge channel everywhere else. That sort of variable thing you're talking about is what we're calling the dredge zone. And that's much wider than a hundred feet. And that's what allows this hundred or fifty foot wide channel to be dredged anywhere within that dredge zone to. Um. To follow the natural channel as, as best we can in order to minimize the volume of material that needs to be dredged.
Thank you. Um.
Anything else, Meth?
Well, I just, um, in, in the, in the revisions that came through on the MOA, uh, regarding, um. A baseline data study. Will this be the first baseline study that's been done in there or do we have older ones? And the reason I ask is that, is that we heard, um, from a lot of people who make a living. Within the harbor, um, about the sort of long-term degradation of the bottom and, and the, and the, um. Um, uh, quantity of species and, uh, what they're able to, to fish for today. So. Um, the statement that doing nothing has no environmental impact. Is less understandable if in fact. The, the, the situation as exists today has been part of the reason for the degradation over a long period of time. Um, the, and, and. So, so is there an earlier baseline study, I guess, is my question?
Kevin?
Yes, go ahead.
I can answer that question briefly and then Shayna can provide details if you want them, but. Basically, the Center for Coastal Studies in partnership with the National Park Service. Did a full set of studies in two thousand fifteen. So we have a baseline in two thousand fifteen and what we are doing is going back over the exact same area. For all of the same, both. The seafloor plus species floating around plus the. Barrier beach condition plus everything else that they tested in two thousand and fifteen. And the town of Eastham is paying for that study. So it's basically giving us data six years later after the first study. And hopefully we'll continue to do this every five or six years to continue to take a look at. The health of the estuary and the marsh over time.
So everything prior to two thousand fifteen is anecdotal?
I'm, I don't know if there have been other studies prior. I'm sure there have been, but they've been pocketed. And they haven't been on the entire. Thing. I mean, this was patterned after the Pleasant Bay studies and they did the same thing in Pleasant Bay. So we're doing the same thing in the estuary that was done in Pleasant Bay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Meth?
No, that's it.
How about other Orleans board members? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, just, um, I think a follow-up on what. A couple of other, uh, members from Eastham had, had noted earlier in, in that. Uh. What we're looking for in the. Permitting process is the science that's going to answer all the questions and fears that people. Have expressed over the last couple of years since we started talking about dredging. That, uh, whatever prejudices. Exist on either side of the, of the issue, whatever myths are out there, whatever speculation. Is, is being done, uh, doesn't add to. A solution to the problems that we, that we see. What's going to help solve these problems? Is to actually get the science done. The permitting process covers. Such a wide range of things. Several people have alluded to the size of the documents. Already produced because we are looking at everything that's of concern to people. Whether it's plant life or animal life or, uh. Geology, topography, whatever, water quality, you name it. I mean, we need answers that are based on fact and science. And what the. Permitting process does is gives us that. Science, the data that we need to make an informed decision. We may look at all of the data after the, the permitting process is over and done with and we see what the regulators are telling us. Can and can't be done and decide that it doesn't make sense to do this. But I think we're looking at this in terms of, uh. For many people, doing nothing is not a, a good solution, but. Those are the same people that wanna do no harm to the estuary and to the environment. And the only way we're gonna get an answer to these questions and resolve this issue is to go forward. And gather the data and go through the permitting process. And that's basically what. I think we're asking to do now. You know, it doesn't commit anybody to anything. It, it gives us the opportunity to get the answers we need to make an informed decision.
Thanks, Mark. And I, I would add a little, um, different, um. In terms of the Eastham perspective that I take very seriously is, um, we are just. A select board member that is always trying to listen and do right by the folks that voted for us and have voted. Projects and moran articles to fund things and our voters want us to do this. Um, of course, we have to be careful, um, that we're informing back to them what we're proposing. And I think this process of us continuing to work together to say, we're gonna. Really scrub through, raise the concerns, um, you've raised a number of good ones, I think, uh, we do as well. Will, um, show them, um, the funds we're using that they've appropriated and funded to do this. We're gonna put to good use. And as Mark said, it'll be science-based, it'll be based on, um, the conditions that are out there and we'll all learn from. Um, whether we decide to do some, all, phase it, do a part. We're all gonna be much better served by going through this comprehensive process. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of work, I will tell you. Uh, we better be up for, you know, the questions that are asked. Leslie's gonna bang on Nate's door. Um, you know, need this turned around in three days because we've got a deadline. Um, so, um, I think we're up for it. And, uh, uh, having us work together even this evening is, is really, um, to me, uh, refreshing. I, I really look forward to us doing that. Any other Orleans board member comments and, um, Andrea, go ahead.
Well, as the newest and probably least familiar, uh, member of this conversation. I guess I'm looking at the permitting process and this is where I wanna, uh, be corrected in my thinking, uh, actually. I'm looking at this process as something that will inform us about. The management and future of this shared resource, whether or not dredging is the conclusion. And I guess. Um, the, as we read the concerns that we're serving potentially one part of a population over the overall health. I, what I'm hearing from us tonight is really, I think, more about stewardship. And I guess my question is about, um. In the permitting process, will factors like, uh, sea level rise and storm mitigation? And kind of the other effects of, on the estuary rather than just what we might mine out of it. Be part of what we can discover. And so I guess that's a question for Leslie in terms of not just. How, how, how would dredging affect this, which is a human imposition? But what are the factors beyond a human endeavor that are gonna be, uh, playing in our care for this resource?
Great question, Andrea. Leslie, wanna give it a shot?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Um. I think in part, you're gonna get some of those answers about impacts of sea level rise and climate change impacts. Um, on the barrier beach from that study that Center for Coastal Studies is doing. Um, I will say that, you know, just without studying it in, in great detail. You know, it's likely that, that barrier will get weaker and eventually there'll be a breach in that barrier beach. At that point, um, in terms of the dredging project. Any part of the channel that's back in behind the barrier beach would be abandoned. You know, assuming that there's a new inlet further to the south like there was, you know, twenty, thirty years ago and further on back than that, a hundred years ago. Um, and so, you know, the dredge project would change a little bit. Um, because we would be shortening the channel and eliminating that part back behind the barrier beach. Um, I don't know if that really answers your question, but, um, that's, that, those are my thoughts.
Jamie, I think your board members might wanna chime in. Go ahead.
Yep, I do. I see Art raising his hand. So, Art?
I like, um, Andrea, I'm new to this process and project. Um, my biggest concern is communication. Um, there is a lot of emotions on both sides of this discussion. And I am really concerned as we move forward that we're gonna set expectation levels. Um, that people are gonna think we're gonna do something or we're not gonna do something. And somehow we need a communication process that everybody understands there's been no final decisions been made. Okay, that in the end, the select boards may say, no, we're not gonna do it. Or the select boards may say yes, or we may split. But I'm just concerned that we're gonna set expectation levels. And from a communication standpoint, we have to find a way to make sure people understand exactly what we're doing. That we're analyzing the situation, we're trying to get the facts, we're trying to understand the implications of what we're gonna do. And then we're gonna make a decision that a decision hasn't been made. I mean, we've got a ton of letters from people to stop the dredging, stop the dredging, and nobody's decided we're gonna dredge yet. So I, I just, I'm concerned at, at how we communicate this and how we can keep that communication. Channel open to our citizens so they understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Art. Yeah, because, uh, I think this dialogue here directly between boards is, is helpful. Yeah, definitely. Um. Let, or did you wanna say something, Leslie?
Well, I have a suggestion. I mean. At some point, we're gonna put this document, I guess, out on the town. I'm assuming we're gonna put this document on the town websites. You know, maybe there'll be a, but ma- maybe you guys should develop a section of your websites to this project. And there could be a big statement up at the top that says, you know, this is, this is exactly what we're doing, you know, we're. Or, you know, we're, we're, we're proceeding with permitting, we're reviewing the data, just all the things you said, Art. You know, there's, there's been no decision made yet and, and, you know. Further information will be delivered on this website.
Thanks, Leslie. Um, I think I have another member of my board that wanted to speak as well, so I'm just gonna quickly call on Al.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, in regards to commu- and to, uh, go off of what Art said, in regards to communication. Um, you know, I think there's been a lack of, uh, communication to the public about. Some of the stuff we've talked about tonight, even about the benefits of this process. About the utility of the science and the data, uh, that could be used for, uh, other projects. I mean, there's a lot of positive things that are coming out of this process, this painstakingly long process. And I think if, uh, you know, if the community is informed of these net benefits, uh, as they were. For, uh, anything from understanding what the Orleans, uh, members had said about sea level rise. And environmental impact, you know, I tend to think that, uh, that would be, that would be a good thing to let the community know. Like, hey, this isn't, uh, you know, a one, a one rote, uh, um. A process that we're gathering information that's gonna help us throughout the years and for future projects. That's all.
Thank you all. Um, was there any other comment from the board? Shayna?
Just kinda going off of the discussion about the shellfish relay, I really do think it would be helpful to have a plan. Um, somehow incorporated along the way. How is it going to be done? Who is going to do it? Um, when it will be done, what species of shellfish and where are they going to go? Are they gonna be sold? Are they gonna be transplanted? And if so, where? Um, so that type of thing that kind of answers all of those questions. Um, so that, you know, if the project does go forward, you have a document that lays out the whole process. Um, I also do have a number of questions. So I'm wondering when the best time to raise those would be, whether it be, should I email them? Uh, they're directly related to the ENF. Or ask them at a, at the public meeting?
Um. I guess my thoughts are that. We should try to compile all these comments and I've been taking notes and I know you've got sort of a list as well, Shayna, plus, I guess, some more detailed comments. Um, and then we need to decide what the best way for Wood's whole group to address these and. Get the answers back to you guys. So I don't wanna spend time incorporating them in the ENF. If, you know, if it's still a point, you know, that's, that's in contention. So I feel like there's sort of an interim sort of question and answer. document that we could produce that would address all of these issues. And, and I guess the boards could review it, or maybe you would leave it up to the N E S G to review it. I think another idea is for you to bring up those more particular questions at the N E S G meeting. So that's another possibility, Shayna. Those are just my thoughts, but, you know.
Happy to do any or all of those.
Jamie, I would lean more on the N E S G, only because they really have been working together, you know, different, you know, ideas, ways of thinking, but I think they really are the workhorse with our guidance. And again, we're on it too. Mark and I are on it from Orleans, Nate's there. You've got great representation as well from Eastham, so that might be the best way to sort these through. And it keeps them engaged and representing us, particularly to Art's comments about communication. And one thing, it's, it's a very different project, but Art, you are spot on in terms of the communication of what we are doing, but what we're not. And I use the analogy of our downtown sewer and wastewater treatment plant. We update that website every single week just to let people know where construction is, what we're doing, the progress, the money, the change orders. It's so important. And, you know, we're at a point of, believe it or not, getting compliments from the public. Who knew that would ever happen on a sewer construction project? So I think we can do it. But maybe to Leslie's point about sharing a joint website so that we're posting common information so that an Eastham citizen is seeing the same thing an Orleans citizen is, we can certainly work out those details, but that would be great to do.
Okay, I'm just gonna quickly just go back to Shayna and just make sure, do you think that that option is, is a fair option for you, Shayna? With the questions that you have, do you think that, you know, or there would be a better route to go with them?
I'm happy to email my questions and have them be part of an overall document that kind of answers them for everybody rather than going into a discussion, but some of them may require or cause additional discussion. So I think it would also be helpful for the N E S G to discuss them as well.
Okay.
Without getting into specifics, but just kind of set an example, I would like to ask Leslie, like on a standard dredging project, and I understand we try to, with the application, try to think of everything ahead of time to kind of expedite the process. And also to set the example that, you know, we, we have a good handle on what we are attempting to do. But in an instance where you're dredging and you have shellfish in the area, Leslie, can you explain, you know, what the regulatory process is through the application for permitting? And I also want to emphasize, as you go through that process, I am sure that the regulators are going to come up with some protocols that they would recommend. And I would think in this agreement between the two towns, that as these recommendations through the regulatory agencies are brought forward, we're going to have time to opine on whether we support that practice or not. And, you know, we're not going to be able to dream up everything. They're definitely going to pitch things at us through this process about how to protect whatever avenue we know that, or whatever agency we're permitting through. And I think it's important to realize that as those those hoops come up that we have to jump through, both towns are going to have time to provide their opinion. And as long as we keep the discussion going, this is a healthy process.
Thank you, Nate.
Let me just chime in a little bit on that. So you know, we don't have a lot of details about the shellfish relay and the expanded ENF. And so I think what we were envisioning was, and this sort of gets to answer Nate's question about how it play out in the regulatory process. You know, we filed this ENF with MIPA. DMF is going to read this thing. National Marine Fisheries is going to read it. And they're going to say, okay, you need to come up with a shellfish relay plan, and here's the things we want you to address in that plan. And that's one thing that you'll have to do in that E I R. So that's, that's one of the scope items, for example, in the A R, E I R. And we'll have input from their comment letters on what needs to be in that relay, in that shellfish relay plan. So that's one way to do it, if, you know, and that's sort of what we were thinking in not providing a lot of specifics at this point. If this group and the N E S G is feeling really uncomfortable with that, we can try to flush out some of the elements of that shellfish relay beforehand and include it in the ENF. But I am confident that we will get comments on it from DMF and National Marine Fisheries, and will be required by those agencies to include that in the E I R.
Member of your board, Kevin?
Yes, go ahead, Andrea. Thank you.
I think that we have, like if we, if I have my marketing hat on, we have a basic problem because the whole point of this is has dredging as the outcome or goal. And what I'm hearing the conversation is really about stewardship. And we're using the process of permitting dredging to understand and be able to back away from if we perceive that that dredging would cause harm. And I'm wondering if, as a public thing, that our memorandum of understanding should include in the witness whereas section something that allows the towns and says outright, no matter how we handle the particular challenges of going forward, says at first that we agree as two communities to do no harm, that we're here as steward, to really publicly say that that's embedded. And that comes before arriving at dredging as the conclusion. That might help us with the public trust issues that I think we're hearing on both sides. I'm just throwing that out when we get to that part of the conversation.
Thanks, Andrea. Go ahead, Cecil.
I don't think the project is, can be done without doing some harm. So we have to be prepared for doing, we're going to do some harm somewhere. This is not a utopia here. This is a natural flowing estuary. And in some way, there will be harm done. We just got to minimize it as much as we can, I think.
Okay. So really good discussion, I think. For folks that may be listening from the North Estuary Stakeholder Group, in addition to those of us here, if we agree, we're likely going to collect and recap the notes that we've all taken and put them together and come up with how we expect to respond to these, whether we identify them in the update to the draft. I could see one way, just as an example, on the shellfish relay. I know, Leslie, your initial take was, you know, we expect DMF to come back. My thought would be, if we've got all of us raising this, recognizing it, and to Andrea's point of stewardship, I would at least want a paragraph to say, we recognize this, we'll be responsible for, and we'll look for your guidance on, you know, that sort of thing. At least say, we know what we're getting into. And, you know, you help guide us in terms of what the expectations you might be. But if we set that stage, I think it'll show we're pretty responsible about what we're proposing. Just a thought. So I'll just poll from Orleans Board members. Putting a lot of the review of comments here and then a few more weeks of comments through the North Estuary Stakeholder Group, is that appropriate? Sounds like we're getting nods. Jamie, might you want to poll your board to see if they're all comfortable that way?
Yeah, is there anyone that would like to speak or anybody have any take issue with that process? And I'm just going to ask Alan, Jared, since I can't see you, just to confirm.
Sounds good.
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're good.
Great. So I think that covers topic two. Madam Chair, would you agree? And we might want to move on to the vote and sign second M O A. And I don't think we're going right to that point because you do have some edits and we can talk further. Unless anybody has anything further before we leave the discussion with Leslie. Leslie, go ahead.
Do you have something?
I just have one question. Does it make sense to set a deadline to get the comments from this group here, both boards?
I heard your word said two weeks. I could work with that.
Okay, is that, is that okay with everyone?
I think so.
Okay.
It's always good to have something to shoot for. If we got reason to adjust, we'll adjust.
Amy?
Yeah, so that's two weeks for our comments, but then it goes more to the public process, is what you were.
Yes.
About, yeah, okay.
And the N E S G.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would assume that by the end of, say, June, we would have comments from all three groups. But yours would come in first and then N E S G, and then we could sort of start working on things.
Progress. Thank you, everybody. So Jamie, I know you and I think Jackie had shipped over to our town administrator, John Kelly. All board members did get your red lines, so maybe you'd like to just kind of highlight those changes and see if we can come to agreement on that?
Jackie, did you want to go over those?
Sure. I'll just go through them. So basically, no changes until we get to page two. And then we narrowed the scope of number two, which is narrowing it to just this E N F process and MIPA. And Leslie had had some comments back on that particular one, I think. And, you know, now that we've heard what your process is, I don't, I don't know what the board would think of that because I think there probably would be some benefit in going to the point where the agency gives us the scope of what we have to do, what studies we have to do, what hurdles we have to jump. That makes sense to me, but I'm not sure it would make sense to the rest of the board. Basically, it looks like it would extend the process another month to six weeks, right? Okay. But that would still allow the board to, if that list of huge hurdles was too much or was unreasonable, we could still say something at that point. So that was number two, and I'm not sure what we want to do about that. Number three, basically, we realized that we don't have our study in the memorandum of understanding, and I think we should. So we put basically that we are studying or re-studying that estuarine system. And we can send you guys the scope of that study if you want, so that you know what we'll be getting in terms of data and information, which I think would probably be helpful to all of you too. And then number B was that there were some questions from, especially Art, as a new member of the board, saying, you know, what is the comprehensive need for this project in the business community? Who is suffering? And what, you know, what's the scope of that? And so I thought that, that that is a reasonable thing to say that we will take a look at. And then basically that, you know, all permit applications for dredging within Eastham, we would want to separately acknowledge and review and approve or deny. Then we don't make any changes until seven, which again confines this agreement just to the MIPA. And number eight is our contingency where we are saying, you know, we, we reserve the right to disagree with the Town of Orleans at some future date and to appeal a permit if it's granted. And that's it. I think what it does for our board, and I, I don't mean to speak to all of you since you're here, but I think what it does for our board is provide some reassurance that this indeed is a fact-finding mission and not a decision to apply for a permit specifically to dredge a specific spot at a specific time to a specific width.
I can jump in back initially, and I did pitch this over to Leslie just for another pair of eyes. And one quick one, I think, on three C is just to pluralize where it says applicant on the second line, it would say applicants. And then where it says town in that same line, we'd just say towns. So we add S at the end of those. I do think the greater question is what you raised, Jackie, in terms of duration. In other words, is it just MIPA? Or does it want to provide for this coordination and working together all the way through, for example, the E I R issuance? You know, it just, I, I'm open to whichever way you want to go. My preference would be we want to continue to work together until we know finality of what the permit conditions might be. So to me, that would be all the way through the E I R certificate. But again, I'm, I'm open to what the board's desire is.
Amy?
Could we maybe set up a provision so that when we get to that point of, I guess, we'll know the scope of the E I R? That at that time, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to hamstring it, you know, at that point, if that's, if that's going to be a a cumbersome process. Because maybe once we know the scope, it's going to be, you know, clearer what, what we're up against. Yeah, I see Leslie nodding. So, so maybe, you know, I, I think I'd be comfortable with going up, like Kevin said, to that, yeah, through the E I R process. So we, because we would know even before that. And with our, you know, preferences for objecting or that sort of thing, I feel comfortable that if we had some really strong objections when we got to the scope, we'd still have that, you know, availability to, to object, to know where things were going. So I'm okay with that, putting that in through the year.
And, excuse me, Kevin and Jamie, at that point, would it be possible for us to have an official joint meeting? I think that would be a great point to have an official joint meeting scheduled.
So maybe, and I'll look at John Kelly and Jackie. Paragraph seven is the one that we're kind of focused on.
Right.
And is the way that we could just maybe direct you to wordsmith that in such a way that it puts a checkpoint in for a joint meeting? I mean, hopefully, we continue to have these more frequently to the extent that we have the bandwidth. But it really is good to get together like this, I think, for our community as well. But I'm comfortable, I mean, frankly, between both expertise of our town administrators, I would be very happy if the two of you just worked that out. I think the spirit of what we've talked about is consistent. And I'd be happy to, you know, entertain a motion if someone's comfortable at that point to move this forward, subject to, go ahead, Leslie?
I just want to make a suggestion that you have two more meetings. One, when you get the certificate on the expanded ENF that has the scope of the E I R. And the second one is, you know, once we hopefully get the certificate on the E I R. And then we'll be ready to move forward with the other permits if that's what this group wants to do.
So, so may I suggest, Kevin and Jamie, that John and I get that language from Leslie and we just incorporate that into number seven?
Well, that, does anyone from the board have, I see John?
What might be very helpful? If we took Leslie's slide of the timeline?
Yes.
And use that as an attachment or exhibit, which then it gives everybody an idea of just how long we're really talking and how methodical the process really is. And then, then we can use that with Jackie and I and Leslie's help to put in the agreement. With Jackie and I and Leslie's help to put in the agreement when those meetings will be scheduled, so they'll match the timeline that we would like to all work towards.
So that would flesh out, that would expand on seven, so you seven to point to the timeline as an attachment and flesh it out.
Yep.
John's going to hold us accountable here, folks.
Well, actually, it makes it easier for us because then we have a, for for agenda planning purposes, we can plug those dates in. And we just don't put it on the shelf and try to remember when those dates are, so I think it makes it easier.
Jim, you got a comfortable level from your board, I sense?
Yep, yes, I can just, I'll quickly ask if anyone had any other comments or questions on that, or if folks are in, seems like folks are in agreement with that. Amy, this question?
Yeah, I just, I'm I'm curious where we're going as far as. You know. I would like to see it all completed before we vote to sign. You know, see all the changes that we're talking about. We have a meeting Monday. That we can, we can squeak in, I think. Because it wasn't, it wasn't foreseen, so I think we can, we can get it in under other business. And that would, you know, be able to move things forward as far as getting all these comments in. From other people and that sort of thing. Because I think until we sign that, you know, we're we're kind of in limbo.
And that works for us too. Amy and Jamie, we could pop it in for our Wednesday meeting as well. We're meeting on the 19th, so. If you. Give a green light on Monday, we could take it up again if you've got some tweaks and we could bless it hopefully on Wednesday.
Is that timeline seem reasonable, Jackie?
Yeah, I think the changes are simple enough so that John and I can do it tomorrow and get it out in packets, right? I mean, it's only two. Two changes and a timeline, which I like the idea of the timeline.
Okay, great. All right.
All right, so no roll call votes required this evening.
Actually, no, with their.
Just a question, so in terms of the next joint meeting where we've submitted the ENF. And the next decision or the next that we received the scope. And then the ERR gets submitted, that sometime in October or November? Based on your timeline?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Be like August and then October, right?
Yeah, it was August and then October, correct?
So I think one of the action items, and I know Nate's still on, John Kelly, we probably want to. Kick in gear, the North Estuary Stakeholder Group. Give them a download on what's taking place ideally after next Wednesday. The hope that the. MOA would be, or MOU, whatever.
That's actually MOU, right?
Yes. Is executed, and that that would get them back engaged, and, I mean, I just listened to, I clearly, you know, the communication. We've got to really beef up the committee outreach. Whoever we could put on jointly working together on a combined website or however we want to do it, it really would be important that we start to get that information out there. Because frankly, I think we're all going to find, we'll be referring to that. Over the coming months, just as our own resource page as well. So maybe John and Jackie, could you work together on some thoughts on? A combined webpage, whether you link to us or we link to you. Just to kind of not duplicate efforts or make any extra work for folks. I think we can figure that out with IT expertise. Any other next steps, Jamie, that you heard? I tried to listen carefully to.
I think that was, that was the primary one right there. I don't, I didn't hear anything else from my board.
Okay. Well, looks like we've got next steps. Chaney already asked a question about scheduling the follow up. We know the timelines will drive that, and I think we have item four. So, Madam Chair, I'll leave you the option if you'd like to. Call that motion of your board.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the ECM select board. All right, call the vote, Amy.
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Okay, and I, thank you.
All right, thank you, and a motion from Orleans?
Moved.
Andrea moved to adjourn, Cecil second by roll call, Andrea?
Andrea read aye.
Cecil?
Aye, Cecil, no good.
Mark?
Hi, Mark Matheson.
Mav?
Hi, Matt Ryan.
And I, Kevin Galligan. Thank you so much, everyone. Great work with you together with you. Leslie, glad you could make it. Shayna, Nate, Tom Daley. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.